Okay, my name is Dan Pasquarell. I'm the Vice Chair of the Wenham Planning Board. We are here for a meeting to kick off our master plan. A long time in coming. Welcome, everybody. This is a virtual meeting. With us tonight on the planning board, myself, Peter Clay, David Anderson, and where's our fourth?
Rick Woodland, me.
Rick, thank you.
Gee, Jim, we're gonna have to talk.
Lot of faces tonight, Rick Woodland. The Select Board is also with us tonight. I guess this is a joint meeting. Gary Cheeseman, Diane Buco, and Peter Clay again. And also in attendance from our master plan consultant is Jen Goldson. And is Laura Smeed with us as well? Yes, Laura Smeed. Additionally, in attendance, Erica Champa, Steve Pullos, David Frankel, Joanna, oh, Joanne Frishella, Dana Beegan, I hope I pronounced that right. Ernest Ashley, Sue Petrolia, Recording Secretary Catherine Tinsley, Marty Lowery, Catherine Harrison, Win Dodge, and our Planning Coordinator Margaret Hoffman. This meeting is being recorded. And with that, I'll hand it over to Jen Goldson, who is our Master Plan Consultant, to provide a presentation for us.
Yeah, great. Well, this is an exciting day. We're getting this kicked off today. And I know that the Master Plan Advisory Committee is not official yet, but I'm glad that the members who will be appointed are here. And so if we could just switch the screen over to Laura's presentation, unless you want me to to wait, I see that you have the vote for officers first. We have some introductions as part of our presentation. So we can either launch into the presentation and do that, or if you want to do the voting, I guess you can't really.
Jen, we're gonna, we're actually not going to vote because.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I forgot.
No problem.
We can go ahead and launch into our presentation then, right?
Great, yep.
Okay, perfect. So let's just switch the screen then. And what we've done is put together just an overview of the master plan and the approach that we find works really well for communities. We also want to go over the project launch clarifier results that I think probably most of you filled out. So we're really pleased that, I forget how many we got. I think the last time we looked, it was something like 10 responses. So that's great. And we'll share a bit about what you told us. And then and then we want to just go over some logistics of next steps and things like that.
Jen, before you continue, could I just ask everybody if you're not presenting to mute your microphone? Because we're getting some feedback somewhere.
And also, Margaret, if you can stop sharing your screen, that will enable me to be able to share mine.
Is anyone else nervous about David Anderson driving while he's doing this?
I trust him.
Oh, there we go. I did stop sharing. You got it.
Yep, we got it. Great. There we go. Okay, good. So again, I'm Jen Goldson, and my colleague Laura Smeed is here. You'll be seeing the two of us a lot through this throughout this process. We also have another colleague who's not here today. His name is Dan Hodge, and he'll be an integral part of the economic development piece of this. So next, next slide. And so the next slide just shows you what how we've, you know, what our roles are. And so you can see that our team will focus on almost everything. And then Dan will focus on economic development as well as the fiscal impact component of that, which of course is a unique part of your master plan that you wanted to do to look at scenarios around fiscal impact. So that'll be a really interesting. Yeah, you can go ahead and forward. Actually, Laura, I think the feedback might be coming from your computer. If you want to just mute while while I'm talking, great. All right, next slide. Oh, there we go. Okay. And so I already said this, but we're really are thrilled to work with Wenham. We had a great tour today with with both Margaret and and Joanne. And we spent a couple hours driving around. We got a, I mean, I'm familiar with Wenham, but I haven't been there for a few years. So it's really, it was really great to see some sights also that I hadn't seen before. And of course, you know these things about what's special about Wenham, and I'm sure we'll learn more as well. This slide doesn't represent everything that's great about Wenham. But we do, we do feel that you have a lot going for you. And I know that as any master plan will do, it will help you balance what assets do you have that you really want to preserve? And what are some opportunities? And we kind of indicated on this slide that there are complex planning issues that, you know, that you want us to tackle as part of this. Next slide. And we really learned that from from your project launch clarifier. And before we present what you told us, and we're not going to say, you know, specific, what specific people told us, we just kind of grouped together some of the themes we heard from the questionnaire that you filled out. But I would actually love to, I know some of you are planning boards, some of you are select board, and others are going to be on the Master Plan Advisory Committee. And please correct me if I'm getting that name wrong. I know you spent some time thinking about what that exact name should be. I would love to learn from really all of you, which which you which board you represent. And then how how long have you been associated with Wenham? And then what's one thing that you really love about the community that you hope will never change? And it could be something physical, or it could be something more social or political. People come up with all different kinds of answers for this. And and also what I'd love to challenge you to do, and this is partially a listening exercise, I'd love to not hear the same thing from from people. So if you could think of something else you love that someone before you has not mentioned yet. And then just one thing to give people coming after you a chance. So are you game to do that? I just want to see your nodding heads if you're game to do this as an intro. Okay, great. So I'm going to go ahead and call on people as I see them in the order that I see them, and I'll tell you who is the runner up. So we're going to do, we're going to do Peter. And then Margaret, I always ask staff. Some staff want to be part of this kind of activity, and I'm supportive of that. Other staff feel that they would rather observe and listen, and I'm supportive of that, too. So can you just tell me now, and you don't have to hold to this through the whole 18 months, but would you want to be part of this or more of an observer?
I would love to be part of it.
Perfect.
You know, I've been here for a while, and I have lots of good thoughts about the community. Defer to my board, so.
Okay, well, I, if if you object to Margaret being part of the activity, can you just go ahead and raise your hand? Just the objectors. Okay, I see nobody. All right. So we're going to go in this order. We're going to go Peter and then Margaret next.
Okay, so I'm on the planning board and the Select Board. I've been here 30 plus years. And so gone started here with child number one, then had two more children. They've since more or less left. Although they keep coming back, so which is kind of crazy. But the fun thing about that, that in all of my our life stages, my wife and I, there's always something great about Wenham to enjoy.
So you love the fact that at every life stage, you've been there over 30 years, there's something great to enjoy.
Yeah, I just got my Medicaid card, so that wasn't very enjoyable, but but there's a lot of good stuff to do to walk around.
Yeah, yeah, it's a great community. All right. Thank you, Peter. So we're going to do Margaret, and then we're going to do Erica after that.
So I do not live in Wenham, but I hang out here a lot. The one thing I love about Wenham, I hope will never change, really, is the people here that are so involved and really great to work with. So that's one of my favorite things.
Great. Thank you, Margaret. All right, Erica, and then Steve.
Okay, hi, I'm Erica. I've lived here, I think, 27 or 28 years now. My husband grew up here. We bought the house he grew up in and live next door to our in-laws and the whole, you know, deal. Had one child, raised her here, raised her through the school system, loved it. And I guess the thing about Wenham that it's small town, but it's not like Hickville, and I like that people know each other. There's things to do, there's places to go, but it's also quiet, and it's calm, and it's not big city kind of. I'm not a big city person. So I just like the calm, natural, lots of open space.
Yeah, okay, thank you, Erica. And can you just say, are you, which board are you on?
Oh, sorry, I'm Affordable Housing.
Oh, okay, great. All right. So we're going to go with Steve and then Diana or Diane, sorry. And Steve, I just got to get you to unmute.
Sorry about that. Steve Pullos, I'm the Town Administrator. I've been here for, I believe, just about four weeks now. So still, still pretty, still pretty new, but the, you know, what I found really great about the town, you know, it really overwhelming was the two things is how much the staff, you know, really cared about the town and enjoyed working here. And two, you know, all the community events, there's, you know, several community events every week, and there's a big turnout for just about all of them. I don't know, I just, I felt it really great. It seems like everybody, there's a lot of citizen activity and involvement, government, and everybody cares, and everybody's trying to do the best thing for their town. So I thought that was great.
Yeah, that is great. All right, Diane, and then we'll go to Rick.
So I'm Diane Buco. I have lived in town a year longer than Pete Clay. I'm on the Select Board now. And I guess, so I just love living in Wenham in general, but I also love when things change. So I can't, to be honest, say one thing about Wenham that I love that I hope will never change. I'm kind of like, I think the future has to change a little bit, so I'm good with all that.
Okay, that's an interesting answer. Thank you.
I know.
It's okay. Okay, Rick, and then we're going to go to Dan.
I am Rick Woodland, I'm a member of the Planning Board. We've been living in Wenham now for almost 26 years and West Wenham. And I love the fact I live across the street from 70 acres of some of it plowed fields. I feel like when I drive home at night and I pass by those fields, I'm actually many more miles than 30 away from the big city. Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. All right, Dan, and then we'll go to Ernest.
I am Dan Pasquarell. I've lived here in Wenham for the past 15 years. Before that, I was a longtime resident of Beverly. So still familiar with Wenham, but from the other side of the border, often referred to on that side as a suburb of Beverly. But would I, would I, one of the things I love about Wenham is the entryway into the town, passing the lake and the golf course and the farm. And I'll throw another one out there. I think it has a really rich history. Going back, whether you want to go back to the Revolutionary War, or the Wenham Ice Company in the 1840s, or whenever that was, so it's just some cool stuff.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, Ernest, and then we'll go to David.
Hi, it's Ernest Ashley. I am the Chair of the Wenham Water Commissioners and also on the Open Space and Recreation Committee. And I, like others, just said, I love the views in town, but what I'll say, I hope will never change, is the very high quality that we have of our groundwater and supplies.
Great, thank you, Ernest. Okay, David, and then Joanne.
Everybody, Dave Anderson, Planning Board. I am driving, so I'm video off, but I'm happy to be a part of this process all today. Coming up on my third anniversary in town, moved out here, landed on Main Street with my wife and two small kids. Very happy to be here. Recently found out that my distant relatives founded Rowley, which I didn't know before I moved out here, but it's increased my love for the area. And I will be referencing that at every single planning board meeting from now on, just so everyone's clear about that. What do I love? I love the schools. I have to say that I'm a four and a five-year-old, and they have been well-served by the schools so far. Looking forward to more of that. So have to say that's top of mind on that. Thanks, everybody.
Great. Thank you, David. And I realize there's two Davids, so it's going to be Joanne next, and then David Frankel.
Hey, hi, I'm Joanne Frishella. I'm a member of the new Advisory Committee. And I've been a Wenham resident for 12 years, lived in Lexington for 27 years before that. And we just love Wenham. We love the open space and access to the coast. I'm a retired planner, retired three, four years ago, and very much looking forward to being part of the master plan.
Great, thank you. All right, David Frankel, and then Gary. Oh, David, you just need to unmute there.
I was elected to the School Committee this immediate past April. Our family have been in Wenham since late 2008. We moved there from Winchester. So we used to moderate sized towns. Well, Winchester is somewhat bigger. And I think what we would hate to see change is the is is the immense level of trees and and it's pathways, walkways. And in and around the lakes, for example, in and around Gordon College, you have walking trails. It would be a shame to overdevelop and lose lose that rate asset.
All right, thank you, David. All right, Gary, and then Sue.
Gary Cheeseman, Select Board, grew up here, and I think the one thing that we need to keep a hold of is the peaceful, quiet that Wenham has. We're non-urban, and but we still have access to beach, to mountains, city and rural. So like to keep it a quiet place, peaceful.
Great, thank you. Sue, and then Dana.
Hi, Sue Petrolia. I've lived in town for 21 years, although I'm not entirely sure why. We're all saying how long we've been here. Diane stole my thunder, and I agree that I love about the town that it hasn't changed when it didn't need to, but is willing to change and and look to ways to grow and expand and modernize. I get it, Diane, even if no one else did. Um, also, the other thing is I hope it keeps snowing, because I love it in this community. When it snows, everybody goes outside and plows and digs and talks and chatters, and it's quite a social event. And so I love the neighborhood feelings of the the whole town.
Thank you. All right, Dana, and then we'll go to Phil.
Hi, Dana Beegan. I'm a member of the Advisory Committee, and I've lived in town for just about 10 years now. One thing I I would like to see not change, and I don't think it will, but I think it'll be enhanced, is I think Wenham has an incredible amount of recreational opportunities for a town of its size. We've got open space. We've got museums. We've got a couple of small, but very good restaurants, or a restaurant and a bagel shop. And then we have, you know, we have a lot of architectural, we have a lot of, sorry, antique homes and things of that nature. We've got just a nice blend of everything. We've got Pleasant Pond. So that, those are things that that I would like to see not changed, but enhanced. Thank you.
Thank you, Dana. Okay, Phil, and then I'm going to skip the Recording Secretary unless someone tells me I shouldn't. So after Phil is going to be win.
Hi, Phil Coloroso, Chair of the Conservation Commission. I've lived in town for about 19 years. The thing I love about Wenham is the really high taxes. No, no, sorry, that was wrong. The, the green space, so similar to what everyone else had said, the the open space and the many opportunities to enjoy the, enjoy nature in the town.
Great, thank you, Phil. Okay, win, and then, and I think, is it okay if I go to members of the public, including Catherine Harris, would be after win?
Let's get Catherine Tinsley in there, too.
Yeah, okay, great. So win, and then we'll go to Catherine.
As long as you want to participate, when you're not required to.
No, no, you're not.
I suppose I should cut video, but thank you. I have been, I grew up here, as did Gary, and lived here all my life, which is a very long time, to give you some idea of my age. But I think it's already been discussed, but the real quality here is the people who have been here over the years that I've been fortunate to work with, and virtually all aspects of the town government and schools and whatever. And people, nice people, but people willing to serve the town and step up when it was necessary. And over the years, I've been lucky because there has been very little animosity among those of us who served on boards, and people were lucky to do the best they can for the town. Really interesting. So I appreciate that.
Great, thank you. All right, Catherine, and then Marty after that. Hopefully Catherine can hear me. If you're trying to, there you go.
So there are two Catharines here, Catherine Tinsley as well.
Oh, sorry about that. I.
I can start if that's okay.
Yeah.
So I'm, my name is Catherine Harrison. I'm at the moment just a very, very interested resident, a recent Select Board member, but not acting in that capacity at all. We've lived in Wenham, my husband and family and I, for 35 years. And I grew up in a much more urban setting, suburban, more urban. And what I love about Wenham is, several people have talked about this a little, but I love the fact that it's the neighborhoods, it's, we don't, we live further apart than when I was growing up, and yet everyone is my neighbor, and everyone is willing to help. And I never worried about my kids wandering around town because there was someone else who knew them and would watch over them. So it's just the people in town that I I think have been, have made this, one of the things that have made this a very unique community, on that I was happy to raise my kids in. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, Marty, the last.
Jen, excuse me, just one minute. I did want to just note Catherine Tinsley is the Recording Secretary, but Catherine Tinsley, I think, should be included in this discussion. She's.
Oh, sure, sure.
And knows more than any of us about what's going on.
All right, perfect. So then we'll do Marty, and then we'll end with Catherine Tinsley.
Hi, I'm Marty Lowery. I'm Vice Chair of the COA. I've lived in town for 44 years. And the one thing that I hope will never change in Wenham is the small-town feel and the friendliness that goes along with it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Catherine Tinsley.
Hi, good evening. I grew up in Wenham, third generation. My husband and I have been back for about 15 years now. I've worked for the town for 21 years. Don't worry, win, I won't say anything. And no, it's it's an interesting process. It'll be fun to watch unfold.
Great, thank you so much. All right, that's really helpful for Laura and I to start to get to know you all. And I I hope maybe you learned something about each other, too. All right, so the next slide, I think we're going to get into what you told us your hopes for the plan was. For, I think a lot of you did take the Project Launch Clarifier questionnaire that we sent around, I think, last week sometime. And we just summarized what you told us. So the next, next slide. So this is generally what it looks like, although you filled out a different version. You did an online questionnaire rather than this forum, but the questions are the same. They're, what were your top three hopes for this project? What are you most curious to learn through the planning process? And then what do you think are the greatest opportunities and challenges in the community that you hope this project can address? And we haven't summarized by these questions. We just took some of the themes that we started to hear. So the next slide talks about your hopes. And so the themes that we heard are, you really want to have a very inclusive process, to have inclusive engagement, and and end up with a very clear vision that the town can move forward with together and a framework for doing that. And then you're also looking for balance. And I'll talk about each of these a little bit more. Next slide. So inclusive engagement, what you told us, that you really want to involve a diverse array of Wenham residents, accurately reflect as part of the plan that ends up, the values and needs of the community. You really want something that's as transparent as it can possibly be, as well as efficient process. So you want to, you know, use public engagement in a way that's really meaningful in order for it to be efficient. And one way that, you know, we've talked about making this process very transparent, and Laura may talk a little more about this, is using these Master Plan Advisory Group meetings, not just to report what's happening, but to really run interactive exercises with whoever happens to attend, including the committee members. And so we like to think of those as little mini workshops, and you got a little taste of how we might run something like that on Zoom. And each time we come to you, we'll either be running a kind of an exercise with you, or we'll be presenting some new information that we want to share with you and get your comments on. And then the last bullet here is collaboration consensus and fully supported by the community. And so let me just manage your expectations a little bit. So it's very difficult. I would almost argue that it's impossible to get full consensus on any planning document. But what we can promise you is that we will do our best to find the common ground. There may be, you know, the way we like to frame it, when we start to get into strategies, are are any of these deal breakers? Can you live with all of these? They may not be everyone's first choice. But if everyone on the Advisory Group, the Planning Board, the Select Board can live with the strategies, then we call that a win. So but collaboration, absolutely. And we do think you'll end up with a plan that is supported by the community. Next. So what you told us about a clear vision and framework, you want this to be forward-thinking, provide a clear and sustainable framework. And I imagine that you mean sustainable maybe in multiple ways, including fiscally sustainable, as well as environmentally sustainable, specific, practical, and achievable action items. So you don't want two pie in the sky. You really want to get down to something that's very realistic for you. And the last thing that we added to the slide was concrete direction for building economic development. And I know that you really focused in the request for proposals on the economic development piece, which is why we brought in Dan on this, who you'll meet. You'll meet soon, probably your first official Advisory Committee meeting. Next. And then you talked about balance. And so a lot of you, when you just answered the first question we asked you, what do you love about this, talked about open space, scenic beauty. Rick talked about the fields across from his house. Somebody, I can't remember who, talked about the tree cover, talked about recreation opportunities. And so looking, how do you balance that rural quality of life, that that scenic beauty and feeling like you're not in an urban area, although someone called, you know, calls Wenham a suburb of Beverly, you're very close to other urban areas. How do you balance that with economic development? And that's not going to be easy to figure out, but that's part of our main core responsibility in this planning effort. So and that's all related to improving the tax base, which many of you also talked about. And then the other thing you talked about was addressing needed maintenance of public facilities in the community, as well as your open space. Next. I think that might be it. Yeah, all right. So Laura, why don't I hand it off to you? And Laura's going to go over master plan fundamentals and just what to expect as part of this process. Okay, so real quick on some of the master plan fundamentals.
I think we've lost Laura. She appears to be.
Yeah, she might be frozen, so I'm hoping she'll come back. There we go. Okay. Can everybody hear me? You were frozen just for a few seconds. Yeah, I want to hear what you just said. Sure, yeah. So a master plan is is really a long-range visionary, high-level document. It's a way to respond to changing for times. So it's a policy document. It's a framework to help you make decisions over time. And it's going to be focused on your physical evolution, the built environment primarily, not as much about the sort of social or community building, although that, you know, there are some other kind of policy implications that could touch on that. But for the most part, it's it's going to be topics related to the the built environment. Some of the core questions that a master plan wants to address are how you are balancing.
how you are balancing competing interests, right? There's only so much time, there's only so much money. Sometimes there's tensions between different topics. We just talked about the idea of a rural quality of life and economic development. And some, and they can be balanced, but figuring out how to balance them is part of the process. And then also, how do you shape and change and capitalize on opportunity at the same time you're preserving your assets? So you're strengthening your assets and enhancing them. And also, who, who are you as a community? What's your identity? What are your values that you have that you want to have shine through in your, in your goals and your strategies? And then how do you leverage the assets that you have to help you achieve those goals? So Wenham's last master plan was in nineteen sixty. A fair amount has changed in the past sixty years. As a town, you grew about seventy eight percent in residents, so population since nineteen sixty. Although in the last ten years, Wenham has grown only about two percent as per to the average of Massachusetts as a whole. And you have higher than average incomes and it's a really a family town. There's a higher than average statewide of people who are married families with children. And no surprise to anyone on this call, but you have the vast majority of your land is single family residential zoning or single family homes and a lot of open space, as people mentioned. And also you have some drinking water and wastewater infrastructure limitations, challenges, and, and that's something that the master plan is going to have to, you know, try to take into account in any of the goals and strategies that that we start to brainstorm together. And this is just to emphasize that even during and after and whatever phase of the pandemic we're in right now. You, there's ways to have successful and meaningful community engagement. And we will be working with you on what that a public participation plan looks like. We use a variety of different methods, in person or online or hybrid or live at the same time or sort of asynchronous, right? So we have lots of different things that we'll do and strategize together with you so that we make sure that we get a very representative group of people participating and as many points of participation as we can throughout the eighteen months process. And this is really an opportunity to create a policy roadmap. I think that's something that I was really delighted to see that theme come up in, in the, in the background questionnaire, because that really is at the heart of what a master plan is, a policy roadmap to guide the local decision makers in town. And it's not meant to be set in stone. It is meant to be thoughtful and have principles and policies that you can follow, even as things do will naturally change over ten years. But we want to set you up to success for what your future holds. We, you know, is that refreshing your zoning? Is that complying with the new state requirements? I think some of you are familiar with the housing choice bill or the so-called MBTA communities regulations that will be impacting Wenham. Allocating municipal resources, guiding local decisions, all of that kind of comes into this balance and framework that will help put together, together. So from a statutory position, there are certain elements of a master plan that are required. We include all of those and then some in, in Wenham's plan or proposed topics for your plan. So it's fine, the little categories will shift around a little bit and that's all fine, as long as we touch on all of the statutory elements. And then we have one more. We have the sustainability, natural resources, water and energy category that's, you know, forward thinking and thinking about resiliency and natural resources and more diverse forms of energy and all of that sort of thing. But at the same time, that's presented as kind of a siloed outlook. And while we will present maybe your existing conditions in a more siloed way, at the, at the heart of the goals and the strategies, all those topics are interconnected. And I think one of the most valuable parts of a comprehensive master plan is it's a way to look at all those different topics at the same time and look at how they're interrelated together. You know, land use and transportation and how all those play off against each other and have tensions together and how you balance them all and impact each other. Is it becomes a, you know, it's a more powerful and connected whole when you think about them all together. So that's how we approach the goals and strategies is really from a systems approach to integrate those elements and weave them with other themes throughout the plan and process. So for example, the topic of sustainability. You know, that, that is very broad. It has environmental implications, has economic implications, has social implications. And it crosses a variety of different topics. So a topic like public health would be similar. So there could be other themes that come up throughout this process, community engagement process. And we really want to be open to whatever comes out from what we hear from you and, and the public. So here's a little example from another community's plan of how that might be illustrated. So you would have, I think at the time, these were called vision pillars. Now I think we call them themes, right? You have an overall vision and then you have some themes, whether that's bringing people together or having a, a specific place like the downtown. And each of those themes has related statutory elements that are associated with them. And specific goals and strategies associated with them. So everything kind of fits under some of these systems themes, but we do touch on all of the statutory elements as well. Make sure those are covered. So this is a diagram that, that Jen created of how that kind of fits together. So at the root of the master plan is, it's really, the plan is rooted in your values. So down there is your community values. And from that, you we look at existing conditions, trends, issues, all that information to come up with a vision. Sort of the dream, the hopeful but realistic dream of possibilities, imagining what Wenham at its, would look like at its very best in, in ten years. And from that, then you can come up with what are the goals? What the, will the community do to, to reach that? And they're more broad, they're general. But at the same time, you know, they're descriptive and achievable. And the distinction between a goal and a strategy is the strategy is really kind of operationalized the goal. They get very, much more specific. Exactly how will you achieve that goal? Who is going to do that? When? And it's very specific and measurable and, and time based. But at the same time, all of those, the every strategy should relate clearly to a goal, which relates to the vision and all at the same time rooted in a value. So it's all kind of together, working as consistently as one. This is an example of an existing conditions analysis. This is something that we're going to be working on for you over the course of the summer. This is taking a look at Wenham in twenty twenty two as a snapshot in time with whatever the latest data that we have available to us is. And, and thinking through these in a more topical way. You know, land use, housing, circulation or transportation. Where are we at? What do you have? What do you not have? How do you compare to other similar communities? And describing that out, out in a detailed report for the, you know, especially for people like Margaret or other staff. I find the existing conditions analysis to be really helpful data, especially when things, doing things like, you know, applying for grants, for example, or things like that. It's all going to have a lot of useful up to date data for you. And then from that, as previously mentioned, we, we co-develop with you, you create a overall vision of what Wenham will look like in ten years at its very best. And we kind of write that out as a statement. We come up with the actual description for what that vision is. And from, there's another example of a vision. So this is from Ipswich. Ipswich is a scenic coastal community defined by its open space and natural resources. First period historic resources, vibrant local businesses, strong schools and community partners, and a welcoming social fabric for residents and visitors of all ages, races, ethnicities and backgrounds. This is one from Winchester. A civically engaged, close knit community that is welcoming and inclusive with representative leadership and town government. The community balances new growth with its historic charms and maintains high quality town services in a fiscally responsible manner. So you can see that kind of even between communities, there's some, there's, it's individual. Every vision is going to look and feel different to a community. And I think one of the things we really try to do is you should be able to open up a plan and read a goal or read a vision and have it be Winchester, or not Winchester, you know, or in this case it'd be Winchester, but in your case it'd be Wenham. They're not, it's not going to be a general boilerplate thing you can find in any plan. We want to make sure it's specific to you. Here's some examples of goals. This is from, happens to be from Winchester. So you have these, you know, kind of an overall, maybe a theme or a description of what that is, and then different goals. This is almost a little too small for me to see. But so encouraging more commercial mixed use and compact development in areas that support economic vibrancy, including strategic redevelopment parcels in the town center and identified evolving opportunity areas. So you can see that that's a, was a fairly long sentence. And it gets very specific. So they're trying to get at a, you know, a specific thing related to, to Winchester. And here's some examples of strategies. So how are you going to actually do that? In this case for Winchester, there was these, there were, you know, icons that we key for a particular strategy type. That's not something we always do with every plan, but so there's different, you know, different looks and feels to every single plan that we, that we do. In this case, it's, you know, for strategic redevelopment of evolving opportunity areas. So if you flip back to that, that is kind of the first goal here. We're talking about evolving opportunity areas, which is something that is specific to Winchester. We're talking about increasing community planning staff capacity, creating an area plan for the North Street quarter. So all of these are you know, very specific and actionable. And furthermore, as a part of the master plan, there is an action plan document that you'll receive as well. Up, did I freeze again? No, we're good. Okay. An action plan document that you'll receive as well, that will go into each one of these strategies in more detail and layout. What are the, you know, what are resources? What do we mean by that? So even though in the master plan document, it's still kind of high level to keep it very readable and accessible to the public. There's also an action plan document that gets very specific on every strategy that we develop. This is an example of a future land use map. What are, what are the places you want to preserve? What are the areas that maybe you want to tweak or, and what are the areas that are really, you want to, you know, transform? And so this is, you know, and/or you could color it in a different, in a different manner and talk about zoning, rezonings or other ways to illustrate it. But this is how it was illustrated for Winchester. So it's a very forward looking way to illustrate change in a comprehensive way, goals of the master plan. So how do we identify those visions and goals? It's really rooted in community engagement. Lots of conversations, meaningful, inclusive engagement. And, and then finding the themes that we keep hearing over and over again to really tease out what are those values that are, that we can use to create the overall vision. And I think that's the end of my piece. I might turn it back over to Jen to talk about overall schedule and things like that. But that's a, that's the little one oh one, master plan one oh one.
All right, awesome. Thank you so much. All right, let's go to the schedule. So we're going to create a detailed schedule for every phase that we'll go over with the master plan advisory committee. This is the overall of the whole project, so the whole eighteen months. And so we'll, this is from the proposal and you'll see that, you know, it's starting a little bit later. We were waiting for the advisory group to be appointed. And so we'll make adjustments so that it starts really in July, or I'm sorry, it's June. In June. So we're just about a month off. And so we'll just make adjustments to bring that out. But phase one, as Laura talked about, is really yesterday and today, it's trying to understand what, where have you come from in the past few decades and what are you right now in terms of, we look at a lot of, a lot of data, we do focus groups for every topic, we do interviews with all of your department managers. And we create this large existing conditions. It's really a baseline document of everything we learned in that phase. And we want to present that to what we suggest is a joint meeting of the planning board, select board and the advisory committee at the end of that phase. And so that's what this is, present comprehensive. Oh, you can't see my cursor. I thought of sharing my screen, but you can read it. Present comprehensive existing conditions report. And so these focus groups will be one of the first things that we'll want to organize with you. We'll want to understand who you want to invite. We're going to have one for every element of the master plan. Oh, you have that? Good. And so this is the detailed. It's really proposed at this point for your review or the master plan advisory committee's review. But this is what we're proposing in terms of the schedule for phase one. And again, we'll have a schedule like this for every phase as we get closer to each phase. But the idea here is to hold these focus groups in July. And you can see there's a, in this second column in July, the second, third and, second, third and fourth week, I guess, trying to hold focus groups, one for every element. And so you'll need to help us, who should we be inviting? And it should be folks that have some knowledge of those elements. So we'll have a housing focus group and we'll have an economic development focus group and a open space focus group, et cetera. And so you'll want to help us identify who will have special knowledge of those areas or a special point of view that you really want to make sure we hear early on when we're just trying to understand the lay of the land, literally in some, in some instances. And this is really how we make sense of all the data and reports and studies that we're looking at. We make sense of that by talking to folks as well. And we think it's a really important piece of the process. And then what we'll want to do is meet with the master plan advisory committee in, in July for your first official meeting, even though we're counting this as your kickoff meeting. I know you're not technically appointed yet. And so we'll want to meet with you in late July. And we, I think we just threw this date out. I don't think this is confirmed. Is that right, Laura? Yeah. So if, you know, this date may or may not work for you, but the point is we want to meet with you about a month from now. Roughly speaking, to share what we've learned with about, you know, through the, through the focus groups about the community. And then we want to start really talking about outreach for the first community forum. So the first community forum will be in September. And we don't, I don't think we have a specific date. This is just showing mid September. So we'll want to choose a date for that first community forum. We wanted to really get through the summer. Our original proposal was to do it early in the process, but since we're only just starting now, we thought it would be probably better attended if we held off until September. It doesn't really change phase one. We're still going through the process and we're, we're still giving you an existing conditions report in September. But what we really want to do is have a very public facing, public forum kickoff in mid September. And that will actually be the advisory committee's meeting number four. And we can talk about logistics and where that might be held and, and that kind of stuff at our next meeting with the advisory committee in, in July. Can you go back to the overall project schedule? I just want to finish running through that. Yeah. And so you'll see that's what the next few months will be like. Then in the fall, we'll be really focused on the visioning piece of it. And that's really what this community forum, which is showing up in June here, but which we're proposing to move out to September. So that community forum will help to really launch the visioning piece of, of the plan. And at the end, and that will include all sorts of public engagement. We believe that the best public engagement is very varied, I guess is the best way to say it, that we go to where people already are congregated in addition to the public forum and online engagement. And what we'll do is we'll provide lots of ways for the Wenham community to get involved. So for those folks that really want to do a deep dive, they can do that. For those folks that want a a quick way to stop by a table on their way to their kid's, you know, soccer game or whatnot, that can happen too. And we'll design. That can happen too. And we'll design varying levels of engagement to kind of accommodate what people are able to contribute. And so that will be happening in the fall. At the end of every phase, like I said, we'll have a or I don't know if I said this, but I'll say it now. We'll have a deliverable for you that tells you everything we learned about that phase. And so you'll have four deliverables. The first one will be the existing condition summary. The second one will be the draft vision and goals report based on everything we heard through phase two. The third will be um, it's not, it doesn't say it here, but will, it will be a draft um list of strategies that we've learned through working through phase three, which is all about how do you achieve the vision? Um, we'll do another set of focus groups in phase three. And we'll have another forum. Um, and we'll also have a department managers meeting and then give you a deliverable that lists uh strategies that we heard and that people have really vetted throughout that process. And then the deliverable at the end of phase four, which is really when we're pulling the plan together, is the draft plan itself. And um and it'll take into consideration everything we've learned throughout the process. So let's go forward, Laura, to where we left off after phase one. Yeah. You can keep going. Okay, so in some communities, they've wanted to do a an engagement process right away. Um, and one thing that you can think about, you don't have to do this. But one way to get the community involved immediately, if you want, is to have a naming contest of sorts. And it's a way to get some publicity for the plan right away. It's a way to ask people what they think and start to get them to understand what this is, you know, that this is happening and what it's all about. Um, and so an easy way to do that is this little competition. And this is an example of another plan that we're involved with, the Williamstown Compreta Plan. Where they just created a quick online survey, they promoted it widely. It was a chance to explain what the plan is all about. And they ask people for ideas um on what they wanna call the plan. Now, you don't have to do this. Like I said, you can call it the Wenham Master Plan if you want. Um, or you can call it the Wenham Master Plan and give it a catchier subtitle that the community members have come up with. What, if you wanna go through this process, what we would recommend is that we put it out, you know, pretty soon, even as soon as maybe next week. It's pretty simple to put that out there. Um, you can start with press release and really pushing it out there. Um, and then in the meeting in July, when we meet with the master plan advisor group, we can go over the submissions and you can choose uh your top choice. And um so I'll throw that out there. You can talk about that tonight if you, if you want to. And I know the master plan advisory committee is not official, so you can't actually make a decision, but uh if you give us some direction, um, it's really a process piece. And so you, you can tell us if you feel like this is worthwhile. Some communities are like, nah, let's just go with the master plan, keep it simple. Let's forget about this competition thing. So it's up to you. We're not wed to the idea. We just thought we'd throw it out. Um, next slide, I think, yeah, and that's the end. So I'd love to hear, you know, Laura and I would be happy to ask question, answer questions rather um or go back over anything uh that you, you know, that you would like us to. And then I'd love to know anyone's thoughts on if you'd like us to do the little competition, the naming competition. But that's really everything we had for you tonight. Okay, I see um Phil's hand. Dan, do you wanna take over now as chairing this?
Sure. Thank you, Jen, for for the presentation. That was excellent. Um. Somebody's hand, I didn't see somebody's hand up. Was it, you said it was Phil?
Phil and Peter now both have their hands up.
Oh, I see it now. Okay, Phil.
Yes, thank you. Um, so I love the idea of the competition. And I guess maybe in addition to that is if we could ask um community members maybe to submit um their favorite photographs of the community that could be included maybe on the cover or in the plan as well.
And that's a great idea. I love that. Thank you.
Uh, Peter.
Uh, great idea, Phil. Um, so Jen, just a question. How are you recruiting people for the focus groups?
So we will send out, you'll, you'll, well, the master plan advisory committee will, and Margaret, um, you know, planning board can suggest as well, will provide us with a list of names for who you think would have a special perspective or expertise or involvement in each of the elements of the master plan. And then we'll send out invitations to those folks. They're not open public meetings. They're just kind of uh intimate conversation so that we can understand the existing conditions. Um, you know, what has the Housing Trust been working on, for example, in housing? Um, uh, for, you know, for water, you'll want your, uh, I forget who it is now. I know he's on the call. Someone from your uh Water Commission on on that. So it's really um a list of folks who are either involved in boards or commissions regarding that topic. Town officials or other citizens who are, you know, knowledgeable or have a specific perspective that you think we should understand existing conditions. So this is really um our way of understanding the data. It's not a, we don't consider this part of the community engagement piece. We're not asking about policy ideas or your vision. We're just trying to understand the issues um on the ground. So the committee, the planning board, and Margaret would provide us with a list, and then we would reach out um to those folks and schedule it. We would come up with a schedule for each one in July in those weeks.
All right, thank you.
Okay, I don't see anybody else with their hand up. Does anybody else have a question or comment? You can either just raise your hand physically or use the raise hand function, whatever you prefer. Uh, Ernest.
I uh, I I like the idea of uh promoting the master plan with some type of publicity. I I have a little concern about asking for a competition. Remember when the uh England asked for names about a boat and they ended up with Bodie McBoatface? So I I I think a master plan is a pretty simple concept to to pursue.
So I uh Jen, I had a question for you. Wh- when you've done these contests for naming in other communities, I mean, not to be boring, but you know, master plan is pretty straightforward. I mean, what, what sort of proposals or or submissions have you got?
Yeah, and so it's not a competition in that people would be voting. We would ask for ideas and then the committee would look at them and decide if they like any of them essentially. Um, so we won't end up with anything inappropriate. We won't even bring inappropriate ones to you. Um, we'll screen them out.
I'm just curious, like what
Yeah.
Not, not to, I hope I'm not, you know, portraying a lack of creativity here, but this
No, no, it's fine.
One of the more boring documents that the naming wise that I can think of. So what, I'm curious what you've gotten.
Yeah, I mean, common types of things we hear are um uh Wenham, um, a vision for Wenham's future, or um imagine Wenham, or um, I don't know, I'm not thinking of things. But people come up with just a a twist on it. Yeah, what are you, what are you thinking, Laura?
Oh, yeah. So like for Sharon, it was Imagine Sharon, and then they had a tagline of, um, you know, preserving our past, forging our future. Or there's um Medway Tomorrow, or, you know, um, I think Brockton had something like the Brockton Blueprint, and they were playing with some alliteration there. So there's, you know, different ways to do it.
Yeah, it just, it can be fun, but some communities are like, nah, master plan's good. And, you know, we're open to, we're open to that. I love the photo idea. If you're unsure about the naming idea, um, we could just promote it as a photo, like send us your photos. This is what's happening. Um, we don't have to do a competition, but just if folks wanna take uh you know, send in photos of places that they love and, you know, make sure to give us their names, we'll give them credit in the plan and that kind of thing.
So uh Rick, you have your hand up.
Yeah, I I I think we should.
Marty, I'll get to you in a second.
Good, thank you.
I think we should engage in this level. It's gonna be a good kickoff. You just start building awareness. It's low stress. Gets the master plan out there and in front of people. And we need to build momentum as we go through this. It's gonna be eighteen months and then two years before it's approved. And so we gotta be keeping that momentum going all the time through this, so we don't so I would be in favor of a little content. Ego that you selected.
So Rick, I I don't know if it was just my computer, there's a little difficulty hearing you on my, did anybody else have, okay. So I think what you said was you liked the idea of a contest. Was that for the the naming or the, could you repeat it? And now we froze you, Rick. I'm sorry. Or you froze yourself. Um, so when you come back, hold that thought.
I'm back, am I back now? Sorry.
Now.
I I'm sorry, I I, somebody else is also doing a Zoom call right now, and I'm just wondering if Verizon is letting us down. Um, I I I think it's great for engagement to keep the momentum going. This is, it's gonna be over a two year process by the time it gets accepted by the town and then uh starting to be implemented. So all we can do now is start building engagement and building that role of 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 community sponsorship and ownership. Uh, is to do something silly like this and get it, get it moving.
Okay, Marty.
Um, my concern is that the focus groups are starting in July. Um, it's my understanding that most boards in Wenham choose not to meet during July. And I am just concerned about, given Wenham's population, um, will there be, will enough people be included in the focus groups if they happen during July versus, you know, in the fall?
Yeah, thank you, Marty. Do you mind, Dan, if I, if I respond to that?
No, please, please do.
Um, so, yeah, we did think about that and we were, you know, concerned about that as well. Um, and so we could push them off until the fall. Um, we may need to just push off, uh, you know, it may have a domino effect on the schedule because we don't, we can't really complete the existing conditions report if we haven't had the focus groups yet. Um, and so I think we would just need to push out the schedule if that was the case. Um, however, that being said, the, we will propose to do these on Zoom. And if the boards are not meeting, maybe people actually would be willing to pop into a hour and fifteen minute Zoom meeting. Um, if we can schedule it at a time that they, you know, I know, I don't wanna put people out when they're on vacation and whatnot. But I know that Zoom just allows us to be a little more flexible with giving some time. So it's, it's your call, but I think we would have to push the schedule. It would, you know, push the schedule out a little bit.
Yeah, the other thing that Jen and I, oh, just quick, the other thing Jen and I talked about is also because it's Zoom. It doesn't really matter where you are. So even if they were willing to participate, if they were somewhere not Wenham, that's fine. Um, and also if they weren't able to make a specific date and time, we can also gather some of the information, you know, um just written, like written or emailed or or we'll have a template that they can respond to if they have, have to miss the actual focus group meeting. And it's not meant to be something where a whole board or committee might necessarily need to be there or forum or anything. It's really an internal information gathering meeting.
So Lori, you just answered my question, which was, I may have not heard this, but if the focus groups will be conducted by Zoom. Yeah, so I, that I think should address some concerns in terms of where people are located. Um, there's a hand up for iPhone who
That's Deb Evans.
Is that Deb? Deb, are you the iPhone?
I am. I'm so, can you hear me?
I can. Um, Deb, before you ask your question, I'll just note for Catherine that around six thirty, Steve Pullos left and shortly thereafter, iPhone slash Deb Evans uh joined us. So go ahead, Deb.
I have two questions. One relates to focus groups, and I apologize if this was covered before I jumped on. How many focus groups are customary, like what, how many should we expect? And who selects those names and invitees? I just am looking at making this as broad as possible.
Yeah, and so this is not technically part of our public engagement, just so you know that. This is our fact finding. So what we do is we, instead of just looking at studies and data, we also talk to folks um who have special knowledge about you know, these uh issues and what's on the ground um in each of these categories. And so what we'll wanna do is gather a group to talk about transportation. Um, gather a group to talk about economic development. And it's not policy. It's, we just wanna understand what are the existing resources, what are issues that have already been identified and maybe discussed and some background on uh, you know, on recent decisions, things like that. Um, and so um we hold one for each of those categories that Laura just flashed on the screen. So we'll accept, with the exception of public facilities, we actually do individual interviews with all of the department managers to understand public facilities and services. But for all the other categories, we have one focus group. Um, it's on Zoom. It's not a public meeting, and it's really just our fact finding. And who gets to decide? It's really the committee. And then if the planning board wants to chime in and Margaret and the select board about ideas they have, people who perhaps serve on different boards or commissions um, or town managers that may have a special um focus on that particular topic. Um, you know, uh, you would do that because the the interviews with the town managers are not about all the master plan elements. It's just about public facilities. Um, and so you'll wanna invite town managers that have some, you know, special expertise or responsibility in each of those areas. Yeah, so these are not meant to be broad. Um, they're meant to be folk, they're actually meant to be focused.
Deb, does that answer your question?
I do have a specific, another, I, this is part of that, my first question. Um, so I see I know that education is one of the largest that I look at that as one of the, one of the value drivers of our community. And that's sort of, that doesn't appear as a focus group. And again, I know it's a little broad, but how do you kind of engage people? Yes, we're a regional school district, but Wenham funds that regional, said regional school district. How do you engage?
We, we include
That level.
Sure, we include schools um and community education primarily as part of public facilities.
Okay. Okay, perfect. And then I have done visioning before and for some, uh, the Hamilton Wenham Ed Fund. And one of the things that I thought was really helpful upfront, and it may not be a topic for tonight, but it might be something to really help our um committee understand what are the common objections to a master plan or master planning committee or master prep planning process. I know there will be, I hate to I'm not negative, I'm super positive about the process, but I do know that some people would suggest that we haven't had one for decades. Why now? And what are those objections that you kind of either commonly hear or hurdles to overcome? Uh, or maybe you don't have any. I don't know.
Um, so Jen, uh, so Deb, I think whether we go forward with the master plan or not, that one has already been settled because we've taken the vote and appropriated the funds.
Okay.
So that shouldn't be an issue. Um, Jen, have you dealt with any other objections after that?
No, I mean, typically by the time we're hired, the town is pretty supportive of moving forward with the project and doing as uh, you know, good a job as, as they can in the next eighteen months.
Okay.
Perfect.
So, um, Sue.
Yeah, a quick question. What was the, I don't remember what um the the majority that passed the master plan funding was. I don't remember any objection myself, but
It was uh, it was a town meeting vote, I think.
That time, it was overwhelming if I remember correctly. Does anyone remember?
I, I think it was
How long has been since we did it?
I, I think it was at last spring's
Yeah.
Last springs, under the tent and I think it, I think it passed pretty easily.
I, I feel like that's true, but I was wondering about, that was my memory. I don't remember any big discussion about it at all.
There were some minor, I remember some minor questions about funding a particular thing, but it was clarified and moved along. Diane, did you have your hand up? You're muted, Diane.
I just, I know, I'm trying to find the button. Um, I think I was just gonna look and see what the minutes say for the town meeting to get that vote. So I'll do that while we're still working.
Okay, so Margaret. Go ahead.
I just wanna mention another thing. I, I'm, I'm not sure about the way you go about having a a a contest for the name, but I do think the master plan is kind of dry. Um, and if there was something like imagine or something with an action word or something that sort of gave you, evoked a a viewing into the future, it would be fun to have. I mean, just for people to look on the website and see master plan. Doesn't make me wanna click. Imagine, that might make me wanna click. So that's, that's my thought on that.
Okay, thank you, Sue. So Margaret, I have a procedural question for you right now. We, so the advisory committee is not in existence right now. What we have going on tonight, I think, is it, is a dual meeting or two meetings going on. The select boards here, they have a quorum. We're here as a planning board. Um, I think we have a couple of things that we need to do. Um, one is, I know on the agenda, we have an item that says set regular meeting dates for the committee. I think what we should do, planning board members, is have a motion to set the first or the next date. And then let the committee set their own regular meeting dates once they're constituted. So if, if that works for everybody and we could get a mo- or you wanna discuss what the next date would be, Margaret, maybe you wanna weigh in on that first on what the date should be.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, yeah, Dan, that's absolutely appropriate. So I would say with everyone here, you can come up with a good date to get your first official meeting. And then at that meeting, the committee can decide to, um, set their, their meeting dates. Um, as far as that contest goes, it's, it's not something that I believe needs an official vote. And I think if the planning board wants to say yes, go ahead and, and there's a consensus among this group. It's certainly fine for Jen to move forward with that. It's, it's not anything that you need a specific vote on.
Yeah, I'm gonna address that in a second, but I wanted to get to the date part first, so.
So yeah, definitely this, you, you can decide on a date for the meeting. Again, it's not a vote, it's just deciding on a date.
And so keep in mind, planning board, that, um, there's only going to be two of us on the actual advisory committee. I know we've discussed that we may rotate that role throughout the members of the board, but at any one of these meetings, there really can only be two of us. Because otherwise we'd have a quorum and we don't want to do that.
Well, we can do that as long as it's posted, because there may potentially be two select board members at that meeting and they're gonna need to post that meeting as well, so.
Well, but Rick, they, they may not want to do that either. They may wa, only want to have one select board member.
Um, if I could just chime in a minute, Dan, on that. So we've, we've got some conflicting information between town council and the attorney general's office on this open meeting lot. And the participation of other boards in the master plan advisory committee. Whoever wants to come to these master plan advisory committee meetings can come. We can deal with the posting and, you know, there's not going to be any violations here that, that are going to be consequential. I think we're gonna work that out between, um, the, the town administrator, myself and town council. We're gonna work with the attorney general's office and get the specific detail, how to make this work for everybody.
Okay, that's, that's fine on the open meeting thing. I think we said though, in terms of constituting the committee. They're really gonna have two members from our board show up and I thought it was one from the select, but that. We can address that as it comes up. What I'd really like to hear now is what's, what's our next meeting? What's the next meeting date for the real kickoff of the advisory? So it's gotta be after the select board does its, uh, what? Its approval or appointment or whatever it's gonna do?
They did that last night, Dan.
Okay, great.
They appointed the committee, they created the committee and they appointed the actual people to the committee. So the next step, uh, is everyone has to come into town, sworn in. Um, and then you can move on to your meeting. So I, I don't know. Able to come in and do that, but I would say, you know, at least a week to give everyone an opportunity to get in here.
Okay. So do I have a motion from anybody to set a meeting date?
Deb Evans moves, we set a meeting date.
Thanks, Deb, but I don't think you can actually move. I need a, I need a planning board member to move.
Yeah, Peter.
Do we want to discuss, do we want to discuss what the date that people could make or what time at least? And what days of the week are better? And then we can formulate a motion?
Yes, but for. Um, efficiency, let's, let's pretend we're actually in a meeting room here and we're having a, a, a board meeting. So throw something out, Rick, we'll discuss.
Who likes Wednesday nights?
So, uh, Dan, just, just get this clear, you don't need to make a motion to set a.
Okay.
All you just do is say, you know, let's, let's. Date for everybody. I think Jen, perhaps you might want to throw out some dates that work for your company.
Yeah, I mean, we had suggested July twenty seventh because we'll be finished with the focus groups by then and can actually report back to you at that point. And that is a Wednesday.
Wednesday? When? Six o'clock work for everybody or is later better or? Uh, okay, I'm seeing no's on later. It looks like six o'clock works.
No, I don't want, six o'clock does not work.
Doesn't work for Sue.
For me, but yeah, I mean, it's okay, but it's, it's the middle of my day. Doesn't anyone? But I'll, I'll try to make it whenever it's planned for. I may, maybe late.
Okay.
They'd be regular meeting times seven.
What, six thirty, is that better?
Don't change it for me. If everyone can do six, I'll just.
All right, can I have a show of hands of who likes six? Okay, how about six thirty? Show of hands. Dana, did you vote twice?
Evening, evenings are, are fine.
All right.
What about seven? You don't want to go as late as seven?
Would seven work for folks? Yeah, this is why I don't want to be town moderator. Uh, okay, so it looks like the most popular was six o'clock, so. But only slightly though. So I would say July twenty seven at six o'clock. Is that gonna be by Zoom, Margaret?
Well, you know, Dan, as far as we know, we were, we're on Zoom till at least July fifteenth. That's when we anticipate the emergency order, uh, ends. I have not had any direction yet from the select board as to what's gonna happen. It's gonna be their call. So right now we think Zoom, um, can I ask, now how long do you, do these meetings usually go? Like.
I, I would count on two hours and if we can get you out earlier, we will, but I'd anticipate two hours, so two hours, okay.
So, okay, so, um. What did we just say, six o'clock or did we say seven o'clock, six o'clock?
Can I just ask, does it make a difference if you go to in person? Does that timeframe affect anyone then? Is, is it difficult to get to town hall at six o'clock for people? Not too bad for anyone, okay?
Kind of have to get when I get there.
Yeah.
So.
It could just, you know, it could impact me just because I have another, um, meeting that ends right at five thirty. That same night, that's a virtual meeting. Um, and that will be difficult to take in the car.
Margaret, I suggest that we do the one on the twenty seventh of July. It's, it's Zoom and we can deal with the in-person timing later.
Okay, all right, so July twenty seven, six o'clock, next meeting date. We don't have to move or vote on that, Margaret? No, okay, um, all right. With respect to the suggestion for names and photos, I really like Phil's idea on, on photos. Um, I hear Ernest's concern on the, the naming or contest. Wha, wha, what I recommend is that, um, we try to engage with the photos and we leave the naming to the committee. Once the committee kicks off and then if you want to do that, you've got two, uh, chances for engagement. It's kind of rolling. Um, and that's, that's my proposal. Do we need a motion on that, Margaret or? Anybody, anybody else want to talk about that, weigh in?
Yeah, I'll talk about that. I, I think, um, just calling it the master plan, it basically stinks. And, um, but I, I think, you know, if you want to start out with the photos and then a little while later do the, do the name. Um, I think that's a good idea, but I, I definitely think we need to add some pizzazz to the name.
Okay.
Rick? Dan, I thought that, um, you know, requesting suggestions was a great idea. A context, contest seems kind of silly, but anyway, I, photos and suggestions would be certainly welcome.
I'm sorry, who was speaking? I couldn't see.
That was Ernest.
Oh, um, thank you.
So Rick, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm definitely, I, I don't want to call it a contest. It's probably, that's probably a little too, um, too, uh, Hampton Beach. But no offense to anybody that goes there. Uh, but if we picked, um, if we, if we had a collection of them, you submit your choice. And then the master plan committee could select the best choice that fits what they think the town is.
All right, Rick, we're, we're losing you again. Um, David? There you are.
Yeah, I had a quick question. So, um. Master plan is a statutorily defined term. Does anything happen if we change the name away from master plan in terms of legal effect?
No, I mean, we'll explain that it is a master plan, um, but you can call it anything you want. And also just so you know, the state doesn't approve these documents. They technically ask you to submit it so they can keep it on file. Um, but these plans are called all different things. And, um, we can state in, you know, an early part of the plan that it meets all of the state requirements.
So and, and Jen, I think I heard you early. I mean, we could call it, it could still be Wenham master plan, like a, a way to the future or something.
Yeah, you can do that. You can incorporate it either as a subtitle or the main title. You can still have that concept of master plan in there. Other communities prefer to call it a comprehensive master plan as, you know. So you can, you can still have that as part of the title and then have the more creative name. Uh, you know, either as the subtitle or the main title, doesn't, doesn't matter.
Right, Margaret?
Yeah, um, one other thing I wanted to just bring up is the idea of like a logo and, um, you know, a color scheme. Some of those things that will make this a cohesive experience, you know. So when people see it, they know this is our master plan. Like I noticed Winchester, um, some of the other communities you've done, Jen, had, had. You know, vibrant colors that you look at it and you say that's, that's our master plan, you know.
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're happy to do that. Some communities don't, don't seem to want us to go through that kind of a process. But we're happy to do that. And typically what we start with is if you have town approved colors already. A lot of towns have already approved a color scheme as part of their logo or their website and we can start with that. And, um, you know, we're, we're happy to do that if you'd like. And, um, we can incorporate that as one of the early master plan advisory group meetings. We can, or advisory committee meetings, we can show you a few different options based on, you know, the town's colors and then come up with. Um, you know, and that can be a fun part of the process too.
Okay, so, um. All right, um, it sounds like at a minimum, we want to invite people to submit photographs on some sort of. Help us kick off the Wenham master plan process. Send us your, you know, favorite photos of whatever your. You know, favorite part of town is or something like that, your, what you think encapsulates Wenham. Um, and then, does it make sense to leave the other things, the, the naming to the actual committee? The advisory committee that is so that we can sort of roll this engagement with the community? Sue says yes. Peter, you wanna, did you want to say something?
Uh, I was gonna mention, and Margaret knows this, that we, we actually have a social media person now.
Okay.
Could we get this, the word out?
Yeah, we, um, so the social media part of it, um, is part of what Jen will work on with us. Um, we do have someone in the town administrator's office who can post on Instagram, can post on, you know, Facebook. So, but it's, again, we'd like to have it something cohesive and possibly have our own Facebook page for the, for the master plan. Um, I, I know tho, those ideas will start to come forward too.
Okay.
Maybe we can just start submitting our own ideas. Margaret, I think would love to take them all, wouldn't you? And then we can just pick from those. We can, between us, we can come up with twenty-five ideas. Surely one of them has to be pretty good.
But, but I think we want to get some outreach here to the community to involve them in the process.
But didn't you just ask us if we wanted the community to come up with the name?
No, 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 I, my, my suggestion was, we take Phil's idea, ask people to kick this off with submitting photos of their favorite. You know, parts of Wenham or, or whatever. Um, and then leave to the advisory committee. If you want to have a contest for naming the plan or you want to do, um, something else to invite suggestions for how we name the plan. It doesn't have to be a contest, it can be submissions that let the advisory committee decide what they want to do with that at the next meeting. And then we've got kind of a rolling engagement with the public. Anybody? Yes, nays?
Erica has her hand up, Dan.
Okay, go ahead, Erica.
I, 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 I don't want to sound rude, but I feel like we're overthinking this a little. If we want it to be a town involved thing, why are we not getting the town involved with something as simple as coming up with a creative name? We're not stuck with any of it. We've already established that we get the final say in what we're gonna call it. So why not ask them to submit ideas and maybe get some hype, so to speak?
Yeah, my thought on that is, I'm just trying to strike a balance for efficiency here. We, I mean, we are so far behind. I don't, I don't want this little thing to hang us up further and it, it seems simpler to ask for photo submissions. Then to engage in a contest right out of the gate.
But if Jen said she, it's something that they can do, they can take it in, they can present us with the options at the next meeting. It's really not taking any of our time because we're not going to be back until the end of the month anyway. So that just. I, I, I don't know, I might be misunderstanding why people have concerns. I'm not sure.
Go ahead, Rick.
I'm with you, Erica. I, I feel exactly that way. I, I, I think it'll all be done by our first, for the first, first official meeting. It'll all be set and, and done.
All right, so, so Margaret, is, uh, Joanne, I see you. Hold on one second. Margaret, is that, this is just sort of a confusing format. But because do, do we need to vote on a motion as the board? Do we, what are, what are we doing tonight?
So what, what you're doing is you're getting together tonight and saying, okay, she's, uh, Jen and Laura have presented what this master plan is all about. This committee is a committee, but not official yet. You've set a date for July twenty seventh, you're gonna meet then. But also you can say tonight to Jen, yeah, let's, let's get some, some social media out there. Ask people to send us their photos, their naming ideas, because then this committee will have all of that information when they get started. Um, and, and it's a good thing to have a, a name if you want to, if they want to pick a name. Because it's, it's a brand. What, what we're doing is something that needs to be branded, I believe. Um, and, and it wants to be fun. We want this to be exciting and fun and, and inclusive. So I think it's a good way to say, yeah, you guys are people in the community. If you want to, please send us your photos and your naming ideas at your meeting in July. Then that committee will have all of that to look at and say, oh, we love this name. Let's, let's call it that, you know. And it's something they'll come up with themselves. It doesn't, again, I don't think contest is a good idea, but.
Yeah, all right. So, uh, so it sounds like we're approaching not a consensus, but, um, but a, uh, majority opinion here. That we don't want to contest, we do want involvement. Send us your photos, send us your naming ideas. Joanne had her hand up. Go ahead, Joanne.
Thank you. Yeah, I was pretty much gonna say what Margaret just said too. I was gonna say, you know, I would suggest starting with a press release. I think we just really need to get the word out and get people excited about this project and get them interested in participating. And then, um, you know, the contest and the photos, um, that's a great idea. Again, to get people thinking about what are the issues, what do they care about in town? And, um, and then follow up with the social media to keep the message going. And I think it would be great if we could begin to post some of the documents, even some of the slides from tonight. On, on the town's website or Facebook or both. Just so people who are interested in learning more, who would be able to start to reference that. And it'll become a place they can go for more information.
That's, that's a great idea. Can we do that, Jen? Can we put your slides on the site? Okay, Peter?
Yeah, so, um, as a marketing guy, and I understand logos and names and all this other stuff. I think what we should do here is, um. Do the photo, your favorite photos of Wenham, because I think that that's going to get people, um, involved at a much hot, more emotional level. Um, and then we can deal with the naming later. And, and let's just agree to that and, and this meeting.
I, one more thing, I agree with you, Peter. I, I think maybe we tell, ask to send them their pictures and maybe a little story about them. Maybe they will get a little visioning information from that. But also, um, I would be careful just not to put the slides up that have the timing, you know, starting in June. I just don't want anyone to think that they.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Or they're expecting a meeting that isn't. We, if we're gonna start to engage, we have to continually engage, not just start, drop, start, drop, start, drop. And people will want to know what they can do.
Yeah, we can make adjustments.
Information and strategies and all that up, but I would, unless you're sure of the timing, I would let it.
Yeah, we can make adjustments to that slide that was from the proposal that showed it had started last month.
Okay, um, David, I'd like to hear from you, just your thoughts. I know you've been in the car a lot. You probably haven't had as much chance to, to weigh in. If you want to weigh in on anything, go ahead.
Uh, thanks so much. Um, and I don't think.
Um, and I don't think anything pressing, I mean, I heard one thing from Jen, which was significant to me, or maybe it was from Laura. Somebody said, um, look, when we pull this off, we don't want this to just to be a template project, we wanted to speak to what Wenham is specifically. And that's something that's the apex of my value in this project, so I'm really grateful for that. Um, I hope, I, I think the branding is a critical component of this, and I wouldn't rush the name or the color scheme or anything. Because I think we want to get that right, uh, because you get one shot at that, so I wouldn't rush it, but I'm excited to see what. Uh, these amazingly creative minds are able to put together here.
Okay. Um, so that leaves us, I think, right back in the middle as to whether we want to do naming and photos, I'm hearing both sides that. Maybe we want to just do photos, um, I, for, I mean, Jen, let me, let me ask this question, if you're gonna ask for photos. I mean, is, is it a heavy lift to ask for, I don't think it's a heavy lift to ask for name suggestions as well, but.
No, neither one is a heavy lift.
We're definitely not gonna do a contest.
Yeah, that's fine, I mean, we can call it suggestions, um, and that would be very easy for us to put out, you know, pretty quickly.
Great, I'm gonna submit my name request now to get it on the record, which would be Enon and On, so.
Sounds like an ABBA song.
No, it's not an ABBA song.
Um, it, it would really throw something in the loops if I just made a motion to approve that name right now, would that? And I didn't, so they.
Gotta, I reach back to our roots, okay, so.
Strike that from the record.
Hey, alright, do I have, I think we've covered everything, we've been going for over an hour and a half, I think this has been a great kickoff meeting. Thank you, everybody, for participation, um. We would need a motion to adjourn from planning board, uh, Gary, I'm not sure if you need to do that first, or how you want to, how you want to approach that.
Sure, we'll, we'll go first, we'll be quick. Did you want to make the motion? I lost Peter, and Diane, make the motion.
I'll make, I'll make the motion, motion to adjourn the board, the select board meeting on June twenty ninth at seven thirty eight.
Peter Clay seconds. And roll call vote, Diane?
Yes.
Peter? Yes, Gary, yes, select boards adjourned.
Thank you, um, can I have a motion to adjourn from the planning board? And do we need our next, what's our next meeting date, Margaret?
Your, uh, your next planning board meeting is July fourteenth, I believe, let me just pull this up here. Um, yes, Thursday, July fourteenth is your next meeting.
So, I'll make a motion to adjourn the planning board, uh, meeting of this gathering at, uh. Seven thirty nine and to reconvene on July nineteenth.
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth at six P M.
Seven P M for the.
At seven P M.
Yeah, for the planning board.
Play seconds.
Okay, all those in favor, Clay?
Yes.
Woodland?
Yes.
Anderson?
Aye.
Pascal votes aye, we are adjourned.
Great, so, uh, the, the, uh, master planner, we will be meeting Wednesday, July twenty seventh at six P M. Uh, that will currently be a Zoom meeting, and I will send out all the information to everybody, and I'm, I'll work with Jen and Laura over the next. Weeks to, um, get everything together for you.
Alright, thank you, thank you, Jen, thank you, Laura, it was a great presentation, thank you, everybody else.
Thanks, Jen and Laura.